Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Gorskoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
Here.
Councilmember Novak.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you.
Why don't we adopt this evening's agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Novak to adopt the agenda. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the agenda is adopted. And we are right up to Chief Steiner. One of our favorite things. We feel abundantly safe tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Tonight, I'm pleased to be here to introduce our newest officers to the community and to introduce our newest member to the Coon Rapids Police Department Supervisory Staff, who we're going to stand over here tonight. First, we'll start with our newest officers, Officer Corey Lindholm and Officer Kamaladeen Ali. They've both recently completed our field training process and have thus earned the right to stand here tonight to receive their uniquely numbered Coon Rapids Police Department badges. As many of you have heard before, Coon Rapids Police Department doesn't recycle our badges, so nobody has ever worn these badges, and nobody ever will wear them besides you guys. We remind our officers that when they accept their badge, they understand the expectation that we have for them at the Coon Rapids Police Department, to strive to do things our way, the Coon Rapids way, that embodies our core values of trust, professionalism, and compassion. In turn, we pledge to do our part to you by providing you the training, the equipment, the support, and the structure that you need to have a safe and full 30-year career at the Coon Rapids Police Department. So in order of seniority, we'll start by introducing Officer Corey Lindholm. He'll be badge 203, which is a lot, isn't it, Councilmember Carlson? Corey graduated from Anoka High School. He has an associate's degree from North Hennepin Community College, and he went to skills at Hennepin Technical College. He was a CSO at the Anoka County Sheriff's Office. He worked for the Anoka Metro Regional Treatment Center in Anoka for security. And in 2016, he became an Anoka County Detention Deputy, where he worked until 2018, before he took a job with the Duluth Police Department as an officer. While at Duluth, he was a SWAT team member and a field training officer. Corey decided to chase the sunshine to Mesa, Arizona, in 2022, and he stayed there till 2024, where he was a field training officer and an academy instructor. I suspect he missed the climate, so that, and knowing somebody here at the Coon Rapids Police Department, we hired him just recently, and he completed his field training. In a few moments, we'll ask Corey's girlfriend Katie to come up, and she'll be pinning badge 203 on him. Second, badge 204 will be Officer Kamaladeen Ali, or Ali as we all know him. Officer Ali has quite an amazing journey, to say the least. He was born in the East African country of Somalia, near Mogadishu. Ali's mother immigrated to the United States in 2010, and he moved to Kenya, where he started the process of coming to the United States. He learned English by watching American TV shows that were available. He got his visa and came to America in 2015 and settled in East Grand Forks. Despite graduating high school in Somalia, he was required to get a GED in the U.S. before attending college. He earned an associate's degree in criminal justice from Northland Community College, and in 2021, Ali became a U.S. citizen and was hired by the Ramsey County Sheriff's Office as a patrol deputy, where he worked until coming to the Coon Rapids Police Department. Tonight, his wife, Besharo, will be pinning his badge 204 on him. So, Mayor, if you're ready, I'll have you come up and give the oath of office to Corey first, if you want to step out here. And I'm sorry, his wife will be coming up to pin his badge on first, or, I said, really going bad, Katie, his girlfriend. [Laughter] Good luck. Step out.
Oh, no, you're doing the badge first.
You're doing the badge first.
Yes, just like that.
Perfect.
Now we'll do the oath of office.
Leave it to Chief Steiner to make it really awkward for you.
Yes, yes. A lot of pressure on you now with the marriage things. All right, Corey. All right, if you would raise your right hand, let me move the mic over here. They don't want to hear me, they want to hear you. Repeat after me. I, Corey Lindholm, do solemnly swear.
I, Corey Lindholm, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And discharge faithfully.
And discharge faithfully.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
And the county of Anoka.
And the county of Anoka.
And state of Minnesota.
And state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Next, we'll have Ali's wife, Besharo, come up. We'll be pinning on badge 204.
Hi. Nice to meet you.
Well, I missed the S in Corey's last name, so I'll see how I do with this one. All right, if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Kamaladeen Ali, do solemnly swear.
I, Kamaladeen Ali, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And discharge faithfully.
And discharge faithfully.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of the police officer.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
And the county of Anoka.
And the county of Anoka.
And state of Minnesota.
And state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
All right. Next, we'll have Ali's wife, Besharo, come up. We'll be pinning on badge 204.
Hi. Nice to meet you.
Well, I missed the S in Corey's last name, so I'll see how I do with this one. All right, if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Kamaladeen Ali, do solemnly swear.
I, Kamaladeen Ali, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And discharge faithfully.
And discharge faithfully.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of the police officer.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
And the county of Anoka.
And the county of Anoka.
And state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Okay. Next up, we have our promotion to sergeant for Tyler Sinclair. Tyler started his career as a police officer in Big Lake in 2017, and he came to the Coon Rapids Police Department in 2020. Quickly made a name for himself as a hard worker with a commitment to excellence. He took on a role as a DWI officer, field training officer, response to resistance instructor, and a drug recognition expert. One of my mentors, former Chief Bradwise, and now Sheriff Bradwise, had many sayings that some of us affectionately called Bradisms. One of my favorite Bradisms was something to the effect of, people naturally gravitate towards positive individuals, negative people have to recruit their followers. And that resonated with me during this promotion process with Tyler Sinclair, as we seek feedback on some of our candidates, and it's the most common trait that people assign to Tyler, is being a really positive person. And it's that positivity that we think is going to help make Tyler a really successful supervisor here on our very young police department. And I also thought I'd mention on a side note, sort of unrelated, but Tyler shared with me that his father-in-law, Pete Johnson, is in the audience somewhere today and retired just recently after a 31-year career with the Plymouth Police Department as a captain. We just want to congratulate Mr. Johnson, or Captain Johnson, on his great career. At this time, I'd like to invite Tyler Sinclair and his wife Maddie and their daughter Rayla to come up front and pin, get the badge pinned on Tyler.
All right. Got the drill down. Right hand up, and repeat after me. I, Tyler Sinclair, do solemnly swear.
I, Tyler Sinclair, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And discharge faithfully. And discharge faithfully.
The duties of a police sergeant.
The duties of a police sergeant.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
And the county of Anoka.
The county of Anoka.
And state of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
[Applause]
Okay. Next up, we have our promotion to sergeant for Tyler Sinclair. Tyler started his career as a police officer in Big Lake in 2017, and he came to the Coon Rapids Police Department in 2020. Quickly made a name for himself as a hard worker with a commitment to excellence. He took on a role as a DWI officer, field training officer, response to resistance instructor, and a drug recognition expert. One of my mentors, former Chief Bradwise, and now Sheriff Bradwise, had many sayings that some of us affectionately called Bradisms. One of my favorite Bradisms was something to the effect of, people naturally gravitate towards positive individuals, negative people have to recruit their followers. And that resonated with me during this promotion process with Tyler Sinclair, as we seek feedback on some of our candidates, and it's the most common trait that people assign to Tyler, is being a really positive person. And it's that positivity that we think is going to help make Tyler a really successful supervisor here on our very young police department. And I also thought I'd mention on a side note, sort of unrelated, but Tyler shared with me that his father-in-law, Pete Johnson, is in the audience somewhere today and retired just recently after a 31-year career with the Plymouth Police Department as a captain. We just want to congratulate Mr. Johnson, or Captain Johnson, on his great career. At this time, I'd like to invite Tyler Sinclair and his wife Maddie and their daughter Rayla to come up front and pin, get the badge pinned on Tyler.
All right. Got the drill down. Right hand up, and repeat after me. I, Tyler Sinclair, do solemnly swear.
I, Tyler Sinclair, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And discharge faithfully.
And discharge faithfully. The duties of a police sergeant.
The duties of a police sergeant.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
And the county of Anoka.
And the county of Anoka.
And state of Minnesota.
And state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
[Applause]
I didn't know how they were going to up your fan club that you brought along tonight, Ali. Rayla was a pretty good show, too, so. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight to support our new officers and our new supervisor. We couldn't be happier to have the new officers and also a new supervisor on our team. So you are always free to stay and watch the entire city council meeting. It can be quite riveting sometimes, or now would be the time where you can adjourn to the hallway for some congratulations and some photos. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you all for being here. Congratulations.
Well, there goes the roll. I got some.
There's so many people in here, I didn't even realize, I didn't even realize we had scouts in there. All right. Yeah, oh yeah. All right, let's move on to the minutes. Approval of the minutes from the July 9th meeting.
Move to approve the minutes? Second.
Motion by Novak, second by Carlson. Is there any corrections or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The motion carries. One extension. Councilmember Ray Rower.
Yep.
We don't, we don't have anything on our consent agenda. I don't know that that's ever happened.
Infrequently here.
Infrequently, yeah, extremely. Bid openings and contract awards. Item three, consider construction contract for the 2024 Storm Drainage Repairs Project Mr. Hanson, you want to just kind of give us the highlights on that one? I like, he's just smiling and ready to go.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Yes, this, this is, this project is for the replacement of a 36-inch concrete pipe culvert that's below Magnolia Street. It's a part of the ditch system that outlets Moore Park. And in the fall of 2023, we found that there was sinkholes that had developed on the road due to the condition of the pipe culvert and the storm sewer structures that connect to the culvert. So we had budgeted for this work to occur in 2024, developed plans and sought quotes. We, we find that New Look Contracting is the qualified lowest bidding contractor, and their proposal is to complete the work this August.
All right. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Hanson?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I'll make a motion to approve the construction contract with New Look Contracting for storm drainage repairs and authorize staff to execute the agreement.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Armstrong. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item four is to consider adoption of ordinance 2309 restricting parking on portions on 111th Avenue and Creek Meadow Drive. This was introduced at the last meeting, and this is creating, just, right now, the whole road is no parking, and we're creating a bit of a parking area by the soccer fields. Is that, kind of cover it, Mr. Hanson?
That's, that's correct. Over, over the years, we've had some challenges with parking, and Public Works has worked with the athletic associations to temporarily allow parking on 111th and Creek Meadow Drive. But we find that allowing it on the north side of the road where it's easiest to access, the soccer fields, is, is, you know, within reason and something that we can allow, so that's what we're proposing.
Rather than bagging the signs all the time, we're just going to pull those signs.
Correct.
All right. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Hanson, on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 2309 restricting parking on portions of 111th Avenue and Creek Meadow Drive between Hanson Boulevard and Robinson Drive.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, a second by Novak. Is there any further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Gorskoviac?
I mean, we talked about this in the last meeting, but I think this makes a lot of sense, because people park at that soccer complex, and, you know, they're overloaded onto that street anywhere. And I just, I like the fact that we are opening up parking on just the soccer side of the street, so people aren't, you know, crossing over, and kids crossing over that busy street right there, so. All in favor?
You're in favor. I thought you said all in favor, and I went, wait a minute, I think that's my line.
I am all in favor.
Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item, sorry, Dave. A rubberous rules guy over there, you know. Item five is to consider adoption of ordinance 2310 and ordinance establishing a moratorium on cannabis businesses. We kind of went over this pretty well in the last meeting during the introduction. Does anybody have any questions on this one?
Your honor, if I may interrupt.
Mr. Brody?
As a staff level, this should have, we did notice, and we did set a public hearing at our last, when we introduced this, you guys ordered a public hearing. I've confirmed that we've published that public hearing, or at least I'm confirming that we've published that public hearing, but we didn't put it in the agenda to conduct a public hearing under that section. So I believe, we good to go? We did give notice? All right. So perhaps we could tap dance for a few seconds while we figure out whether we gave notice of the public hearing.
Okay.
If we did, then I would ask that we conduct the public hearing before we adopt the ordinance or consider adoption of the ordinance.
Okay. So even though we didn't list it in the agenda item, if we published it, then we would just hold, we'd still be able to hold a public hearing.
I think so.
And move forward with this.
I feel comfortable enough, given those requirements. You did order it the last one. The memo does talk about we requiring a prior, a public hearing prior to adoption. So in an ideal world, we would have put it under the public hearing.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Brody?
Are you going to tap dance?
Yeah, I was going to, I was going to tap dance a little, or say, would it make sense for us to table this till later in the meeting, and then just continue with our business and come back to it?
Sure, if we want to do that, to kind of keep things rolling.
You know, it probably is the most streamlined.
Sure.
So I would make a motion to table this to later in the meeting.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Geisler and a second by Novak to table this until the end of the meeting, or until sometime later in the meeting. There's no discussion on that. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that is tabled until we know something later. All right. And item six is to consider planning case 24-10, consider adoption of ordinance 2311, rezoning 9050 East River Road Northwest, Harstead Hills, Inc.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, appreciate it. I do have two separate items for this. The rezoning is under old business, and there's a preliminary plat under new business. I have one presentation. I plan on just going over everything briefly, and then if there are any additional questions at the preliminary plat item, I can answer those from the table back there, probably. So I did go over this at the previous meeting, and I don't have a ton of new information, but there is a request to rezone the 4.47-acre parcel on East River Road from LDR1 to LDR2 to support a 11-unit single-family home development on that lot with a new public road or public street in the center of it, and double-loaded with 11 single-family homes there. The lots do meet the zoning requirements of the LDR2 zoning district. With what's proposed, the, the development is proposed to connect to utilities on the east side of East River Road, so it would need to cross East River Road to connect to utilities. There are stormwater ponds existing on the development site per the proposal, per the proposed plat, and there is an existing sidewalk along East River Road. There is currently a trail directly to the elementary school from the development just to the south. The school district requested that the proposed development did not add a new trail directly to the elementary school, so kids traveling from this development to school would be using the sidewalk along the west side of East River Road, not needing to cross East River Road, of course, to go to the development to the south to access the school from that development. Here's an image of the proposed development showing the location of the infiltration basin and storm, stormwater holding pond. And then here's an image showing, and it's difficult to see, but you can see the utilities along East River Road, as well as the existing trail on the bottom left there from the development to the south connecting to the elementary school. So with that, right now, I just have for you a motion to adopt ordinance 2311, rezoning this property from LDR1 to LDR2, but that's all I have, if you have any questions for me.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Novak?
Thank you. First of all, Max, love the haircut. Looks good. Second, I've looked at this for a couple of times now, and the more I look at it, the more I like it. I think that this is a great way to use some property that is not currently being used in such a way that we're able to expand a little bit of housing into the city in places where we're not currently doing it, and we all know that we need more housing if we can get it anywhere. And this is just a really good way of doing that. So this has my full support.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ray Rower?
For planning case 24-10, I make a motion to adopt ordinance 2311 and approve the proposed rezoning based on the following findings. One, the rezoning would not have an adverse impact on the surrounding area. Two, the rezoning is compatible with adjacent land uses and zoning. And three, the proposed rezoning is consistent with future land use guidance and policies of the 2040 comprehensive plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I agree with Councilmember Novak. It's the right thing to do in this right, right space, doing the rezoning. LDR1 to LDR2 is a real minor adjustment. It's really about setbacks, but it's all single-family residential homes, and so it's, where it is and being able to put this in, it makes sense.
Mr. Patzner, it appeared that there was a little bit of pushback from the residents to the south to keep it LDR1, but their neighborhood is LDR2, and even some of their lots are smaller than these lots. These lots are all conforming LDR2, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So really, the only, the only impact there is if there are kids that need to go to Adams, they'll have to go down and go down that's their street. That's really about the only impact then.
Mr. Mayor, to my understanding, that is correct.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and we have a second. Do we have any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Let's see, what did we just do? We just did item?
Six.
Six, thank you. Skipping one, and now I don't have it checked off, and, you know, so now we're on to item seven. Oh, wait. Oh, we're going to be coming back to this one.
Yep.
Later in the meeting. All right.
Correct.
I did study this, I just don't have the, I don't have the sequencing down. All right. So let me finish that. Six is motion, second passed. All right, so we're on item seven then. Consider planning case 24-9, consider adoption of ordinance 2308, rezoning 10701 Butternut Street Northwest, September Sun Architecture LLC. Mr. Patzner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. The council has seen this item before. It has been introduced already. This is the request for the rezoning from office to moderate-density residential for the property at 10701 Butternut Street, proposed by September Sun Architecture for proposed 34-unit townhome development. However, this is just the rezoning request. I won't go over all of the broad strokes of the site right now, since the council has received that information before, but at the previous work session, the council did request that the applicant provide an illustration of a potential change to the access to the development that would help resolve some of the traffic issues that were brought up, or potential traffic issues that were brought up by residents nearby at the public hearing. And the applicant did provide an illustration of a potential new access, and I have it before you hear. So this is a proposal that hasn't necessarily been completely cleared by city staff, by Public Works and engineering staff. There are probably some changes that would be requested by city staff for ease of maintenance of the roads and for several other reasons that I'll go into toward the end of discussing this. However, this was the applicant's response to what the city council did request at the work session, to help alleviate some of the traffic issues. And for a little bit of context, that when this came to the public hearing for the planning commission, the rezoning request, there were a lot of comments from neighbors in the development noting that any new addition of traffic onto Butternut Street could cause an issue, because Butternut Street does connect Northdale Boulevard and the northwest to University Avenue, and there's a belief that many of the new residents would be using Butternut Street to cut through and causing more traffic on Butternut Street. And residents have noted that there already are issues of cars speeding down Butternut Street and traffic issues on Butternut Street. So the request for this access addition is, is in order to address that. So what's being proposed by the applicant is what I'm calling a right-in-left-out access. easier to turn left out of the development onto Butternut Street to access University than to turn right out of the development to go down Butternut Street to the northwest and access Northdale Boulevard. And they're doing that by showing the access curved to the east, a median on Butternut Street, a median on the access road within the city right-of-way. And several other items, including hard landscaping, so rocks near the intersection to prevent right turns into the shoulder of the road and make it more difficult to turn right out of the development. And importantly, the applicant is proposing, or suggesting of a camera on the, at the access monitored by the ownership and including that only approved turns are allowed in the resident leases. So approved turns being left out of the development or right into the development in resident leases. And this is the applicant's proposal so that the city would not be in, needed to be involved in enforcing this turning, that the ownership of the development would be enforcing approved turns. So staff did have some questions and some concerns about this design. One of the primary concerns that came up was the center island or median on Butternut Street that they're showing would restrict access to businesses to the south on Butternut Street that already exists that have driveways right where that median would be. So turning left into or out of those businesses would be made difficult by the proposed center island as well as difficulties with plowing the street in the winter. And city engineer Mark Hanson is here tonight as well and, and might be able to provide more details on some of those staff concerns if council has questions. Staff are also requesting more information from the applicant on the camera, whether data will be available for city to review if right-turning traffic does become a problem coming from the residents, or yeah, from the, from the development. So this is the initial proposal that the applicant provided with the intent of providing assurance to the city council that, that the development will be done in such a way as not to create issues with traffic on Butternut Street. And with, with the hopes that the, the city council would approve the, the rezoning from office to moderate-density residential. And staff do continue to recommend approval of the rezoning from office to moderate-density residential. So that's all I have for you with the presentation.
Mr. Stemwattler?
Regarding the sort of access issue, typically that's something that would be considered and approved as part of the site plan. You know, the reason it's being discussed tonight is relative to the conversations that came up during the public hearing in the council work session, you know, it's not directly specific to the rezoning request but is relevant given some of the, the narrative during those conversations. So it, it was sort of staff's recommendation that we wanted to give council some idea of what was being discussed and considered. This isn't necessarily final design, but will give you some sense of how the ingress and egress will occur on that site. And we'll continue to work with that applicant prior to the site plan being approved, although we do think it will look somewhat different than what's being proposed here tonight based on some of the comments Mr. Patzner mentioned.
You're up.
Okay. Councilmember Novak?
Mr. Patzner, could you bring the last slide up, please? Oh no, I'm sorry, you're already there, you're already there. Correct me if I'm wrong, but this setup is similar to what we have near the recycling center, is that correct?
That is correct.
And how effective is it at that location?
I'd probably defer to city engineer Hanson on the answer to that question.
It's, it's the dog park in the, the, the compost site on one hundred and thirty-third and Avaloset
Thank you.
that this is similar to. And as to my knowledge, since I have been with the city in ten years, I haven't heard any issues of traffic taking Avaloset to get to the compost site.
Yeah, I've seen this type of thing in other cities and it's generally been effective. I know there's a couple in Stillwater, that type thing. So I was just wondering how ours fared. And so, yeah. I'd like to see a final design on this, but I know this kind of thing can be effective.
I think our, our, our challenge here is those two businesses to the south. So we have to make some allowance for them. You have to have a median or this doesn't work.
Right, right.
But I don't know how to get those, I don't, I don't know how that works with those south businesses. And I was, and the reason I kind of drew a line in the sand is because I think that if we rezoned this, we have somebody that wants to develop it. They have a right to develop it then and we've sort of, we've sort of said it's okay then, go ahead. And I, I don't, I don't have a go-ahead attitude on it unless we can keep the, the traffic off of Butternut Street. So I don't, I don't know.
Mr. Patzner?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Novak?
Is there, you know, Steph, if you could help me out with what you think the odds are percentage-wise maybe on being able to get a median here that will work, that would prevent people exiting there, going left, but also allow for access to those businesses? Like, do, do we think we can be successful coming up with a design or?
Well, I think we would have to shift the driveway closer to university, the driveway access to kind of line up between the driveways that already exist on the south side of Butternut. And then that's where a median potentially could be, that wouldn't then restrict. We'd have to look at restricting parking on a segment of Butternut in that area. And like Mac said, we do have some concerns, Public Works has some concerns about introducing a median on a, a, a city street. Normally, we don't have one with a road that's thirty feet wide. You see those on higher-volume roads, not, not the local system of which Butternut is. So we'd have to look very carefully about how the design of that would work and how we would maintain it going on into the future.
Your honor?
Councilmember Novak?
Has there been further discussion with Anoka County about getting an exit onto university from this location?
Well, formally, they have said no access off of university.
The, the develop, the developer really spoke against that. He really didn't want that, that, that university speed coming into their development.
Yes.
He wanted the calming effect of them turning onto Butternut
Right, within the development too, exactly, yep.
I'm sorry, one more?
Yep, Councilmember Novak, I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead.
That's okay. Butternut itself, between university and the proposed entrance, how much space do we have to play with there? If we want to get that closer to university, it looks like we would need to actually somehow wrap the entrance around that first townhome group into a entrance into the facility there. And it doesn't look like we have a lot of room to play with.
We don't, that's also where they're proposing their stormwater treatment on the south side of the development. So shifting their driveway closer to university to kind of split the difference where the driveways are on the south side would impact their ponding system, they'd have to redesign that.
And then if we try and go any farther west, obviously we're in private tenant green space.
Yes, we, yep.
Okay. I can see the problems.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Now, the, adding the traffic, possibly doubling the traffic on Butters, Butternut Street was my biggest concern with this whole thing. To me, that was kind of the deal breaker. I was real happy to, you know, when we were talking about the possibility of a right-in-left-out, but I kind of wish that the design we were looking at would be one that would work for those businesses south of Butternut and then would work for plowing. And so I, I can't approve this as it is.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
So I, I think we're dancing around a lot of different things and, you know, I, I get that we're not going to know until we have a site plan, right? And it's irresponsible to do a rezoning to something that we know could then we'd not have any real control over, because anything could go in there that met that zoning. But I'm, I'm also confident that there's something that could be done on this site that could meet all of the requirements. I think when I look at this site plan, this one's not going to cut it, right? If we need to be moving the access closer to university or something, you know, can it be flipped where instead of the drive is on the, the backside, maybe the drive is on the university side and all of the units are pushed closer, was that, west? You know, the, there's ways for that developer to relook at how do they orient things on this site? You know, maybe you have to lose a unit or two to be able to fit that in, to be able to get that right-in-left-out. But I think what I'm guessing that my peers are looking at is not really quite willing to just blindly rezone this from office to moderate-density residential until we have a better handle of something that we know would work on this site.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Mr. Patzner?
Staff and the applicant, yeah, have, have found that this, this, I mean, it's a difficult and, and an infill site and there are, it seems to be that there are trade-offs with most of the possibilities for reducing that traffic on Butternut. That, you know, in, any change that, that can be introduced that has a potential to, to reduce that traffic on Butternut is going to come with some potential downsides. And so it's my belief that we, we are just kind of working with a difficult, a difficult site, a difficult lot and an access that's never going to be able to, you know, potentially improve in every way. There, there may be some changes that someone doesn't like with, with this site. And so, you know, thank you for, for taking the time to, to consider everything that we've brought forward. But staff have not been able to, to identify anything that's a, that's a clear-cut solution to the problem so far.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
You know, I understand no more traffic on Butternut, I get that, it's not my backyard. But this is zoned office and they could put office in there and you could have all, which would be higher, three to five times higher traffic on Butternut with what it's currently zoned. So I, I struggle a little bit with the, we can't put more traffic on Butternut because if we leave it as it is, we're putting potentially way more traffic on Butternut. You know, so I'm trying to find that balance of how can we get a good development coming in? One that makes sense for the developer, but also that makes sense for the residents in the neighborhood and those businesses to the south, because we've got to all be good neighbors and we've all got to work together. And, you know, at this point, I'm not willing to support the change in zoning. I would encourage the developer to be looking at, you know, a potential different, you know, kind of wipe the slate clean, start with this is the access that I've got, now what would I put on this site? Knowing how I can build the access and come back. If not, they need to be looking at an office.
Mr. Mayor?
Let me just ask one question, Mr. Patzner, to Councilmember Geisler's point, if this was flipped, we wouldn't, we wouldn't want all the cars parked up against university either, right?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no, and the, the, so they, they did design this, you know, to the moderate-density residential standard. So we were looking at the moderate-density residential section of the code when guiding the developer to, to design this. And the setbacks from university for parking were significantly higher than the setbacks from on the, on the west side essentially. And designing the site would have been significantly more difficult had they tried to put that driveway up along university.
And I know you were just brainstorming, but I didn't want them to run with that.
Well, you know, but, but you, you still could flip it, thus the setback is maybe greater, but it means that maybe I have a five-unit townhouses versus six. That's where I was saying you may have to lose a few units to be able to make that different access work, right?
Yeah, it seems like that one four unit down on the bottom might have to be sacrificed to get it to go where it needs to go, but. I don't know, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ray Rower?
Yeah, I, I just want to concur with both Councilmember Geisler and you, Mr. Mayor, I agree with that. I'm looking at it going, hmm, how do we get that, that, you know, entrance to be closer to university? And that, that's kind of what I was seeing too. And, you know, this is, this is a really difficult decision for us, we've all been thinking about it a lot. I just want you to know, we don't take any of this lightly, we have to think about what's best for the city in the end. And we have to weigh both the neighborhood residents' concerns and what development should come in here and will be most beneficial in the end. And I just want to say I concur with that when we're thinking about traffic. You know, traffic studies done that certain types of office could be much more traffic than having it be residential, but at the same time, I was just hoping that you'd be able to come tonight with something that would work and would prevent, you know, exiting into the Butternut on, into that neighborhood and this just isn't there yet, so. Difficult decision again, but it, it's just not ready.
Mayor, council?
Mr. Stemwattler?
Mr. Patzner, can you remind me and the council we're at from a timeline perspective? If, I believe there's possibly one where council meeting before we'd be compelled to make a decision, correct?
I apologize, Mr. Stemwattler, I, I don't have that information on, on the top of my head. Whether we have one more meeting or not, I'm, I'm not entirely sure.
Because if we, if we deny this, then it's, then it's to start all over again.
Correct.
If we have one more meeting of timeline, we could wait and have another conversation, is that what you're saying?
Correct, yes.
They could have one more bite at the apple then?
Right.
Okay.
And there, it's, this isn't the sixty-day rule like the site plan, right?
Now, thank you, Councilmember Geisler, I, I'm not entirely sure if we have the ability to extend it past that one hundred and twenty-day limit with the, with the consent of the applicant. That's something that I would defer to, either Mr. Stemwattler or Mr. Brody.
Are we going to want to move this out after item five?
I think Mr. Rowley has sort of the timing perspective.
The, the sixty-day review period with the extension expires on August sixth, which is the day?
After the next council meeting.
Well, so we, we do have a drop dead date on August fifth then.
We could hear it on August fifth.
August fifth is our next council meeting, yeah?
Yeah, that's, that's the Monday night, right?
So do we?
Do we want to?
Table it to August fifth?
Do we want to table this to August fifth? Yeah. And just let's, let's, we can't discuss it after we've motioned on it, so it's.
Mayor, council, I would, I would suggest that just because I think if you, you know, take action, there's still the opportunity. You know, we'll be forced to make a decision on, on the fifth, which is fine, this will be two more weeks. You know, the, the tricky part is sort of designing it, tonight's not going to work, you know, I know there's, the conversation around university, there are already some concerns from an engineering perspective about the left-out that this close to university. If you shift it even closer to university, you're going to compound that problem just because you're going to have some traffic moving pretty quickly on a, on a right-hand turn or across the street. I suppose there's, there's no across street over there, but nonetheless, I, I think we could take another bite at the apple, so to speak. You know, we still have the, the statutory time till the fifth, then I would suggest we take it.
Okay.
Okay, so does anybody else have any other questions, anything they want?
Okay, Councilmember Geisler?
I would just, Mr. Patzner, just to encourage the applicant to take a look and think broadly, you know? Is there anything that they could do, even with the businesses to the south? Can they coordinate, could they pay for them to move their driveways? To allow where a median could potentially go? Could they look to say, do I need to bring or, or change how much right-of-way I have on my property to make sure that that movement and that little extra median is within their property versus out to the road? Could they potentially look to acquire something to the right west of their property to be able to move the access? There's a number of different things that they could potentially try. They may be long shots, but I think it, what we're asking them is to come back to us by the fifth and say, this is what we can do, this is what we're willing to do, you know? And have our staff be able to say thumbs up, thumbs down, is this going to work from a, a traffic perspective, a safety perspective? You know, because that's to me going to be critical, if it's not safe, it, it's not going to matter, right? And so that's what I would ask that you make sure that the, the applicant's coming back to us with. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah? Councilmember Geisler?
Yeah, the comments that Councilmember Geisler made, I think are spot-on, I was thinking the same thing. Overall, I'm not opposed to changing this to, to residential, but the way it is right now, for everything that everyone's talked about, you know, the first thing that popped up is it's too dense. Butternut Street really was never designed to be a feeder street into a, a, you know, a development this large. So if you could change that access to a point where we could get some real traffic flow conditions on there that we wanted to without impacting, you know, kinder care and the daycare businesses to the south. And in my opinion, I think the density would have to come down a little bit to, to accommodate that. So for the same concerns that the rest of the council has, I just wanted to chime in on that.
Anybody else have any questions or somebody ready to make a motion?
Motion to table?
Second?
Motion by Novak, second by Geisler to table, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion is tabled and we'll take it back up at our August fifth meeting. Thank you, Mr. Patzner. Item? Are we ready for five?
Mayor and council, we did confirm, it was noticed properly, just miscategorized on this agenda, so. As long as Mr. Brody is comfortable with the fact that we have noticed it, it's just not on the agenda in the proper spot. I think we could circle back to it as a public hearing item.
All right, so then we'll, we'll start with a public hearing after, does anybody have any questions on this first, Mr. Brody?
Remove it from the table, I can't remember.
You should remove it from the table.
Mayor?
Okay.
I'll make a motion to remove ordinance twenty-three ten.
I'll make a motion to remove ordinance 2310, establishing a moratorium to, on cannabis business in the city from the table.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Novak to remove that from the table. I don't remember if we can discuss that or not, but all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and that's now off the table. Does anybody have any questions on this ordinance before we go to the public hearing? Okay, hearing none. We'll open the public hearing on the adoption of ordinance 2310 and ordinance establishing a moratorium on cannabis businesses. Is there anybody here to address counsel for the public hearing on ordinance 2310 and ordinance establishing a moratorium on cannabis businesses? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing and come back to council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 2310 and ordinance establishing a moratorium on cannabis businesses in the city.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Novak. Is there a further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Guskowiac?
Term of the moratorium, is that discussed anywhere?
Until January 1st, 2025.
There it is, okay, right there. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray Rower?
I just want to make a note that this is so that we have time to make sure we have the correct information, that we can fully assess and make appropriate decisions.
Okay, any other discussion? We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And we tabled item seven and we are up to item eight. Approve an agreement with Anoka Ramsey Community College for security contract. Kuhn Rapids Police Department provides evening security patrols and student escort services to Anoka Ramsey Community College through the part-time employment of police reserve officers, and this is accomplished utilizing an agreement between the city and the state of Minnesota. Chief Steiner, anything you wanted to hit on with this?
Just the fact that, or mayor and council members, just the fact that this is largely the same contract we enter into every year, taking into consideration a 3.5% COLA that was factored into this. So it is just that time of year again for us, and it's a partnership that's longstanding and very successful, and we're recommending that you authorize the mayor and the city manager to enter into an agreement with state of Minnesota for those services.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray Rower?
I think this is great. We definitely want to keep our college students safe, and I certainly remember using student escort services myself when I was a college student. So I will make a motion to authorize the mayor and the city manager to enter into an agreement with the state of Minnesota and Anoka Ramsey Community College to provide security services for 2024 through 2025.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Geisler. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson?
We've had this contract for years and years. I think it's great for the Anoka Ramsey because they get fantastic security service. And at the same time, it's great, it's great visibility for the police department. Lot more opportunity for our reserve officers to be out there and having daily contact with a lot of those students at Anoka Ramsey. I think it's just great for everybody.
Oh, sure. All right, any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Armstrong?
Uh, I, I concur with what Councilwoman Carlson said, and to be a little selfish, I actually did these patrols for years and years and years. And I can, I can attest to the, to the men and women that are out there doing it now. They have stopped break-ins into vehicles. They have stopped, uh, individuals walking to their cars from being assaulted. We have stopped, we, we've aided in potential fires that, that could have taken place at the college. Uh, we've helped with different accidents, et cetera. You can go right down the list. These, uh, these people are very valuable out there, protecting the, the students and the staff and everybody else that's, that's there. So I'm, I'm very, very much in favor of this.
Kind of made my neighborhood sound kind of rough though.
No.
Mr. Mayor.
All right, any other discussion? We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item nine is to consider planning case 24-11, consider preliminary plat for Cardinal Crest 9050 East River Road, Harstead Hills Incorporated. And Mr. Passner kind of covered this, I believe, on his last presentation. Does anybody have any questions on this? Hang on, let me, this is item 10. This is item nine, thank you. That's what I'm doing around here. I thought, wait a minute, a public hearing, what? All right, consider preliminary plat for Cardinal Crest. Okay, does anybody have any further questions of Mr. Passner on this?
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Geisler?
I'll make a motion in planning case 24-11 to approve the preliminary plat with the following conditions. One, that all engineering comments be addressed. Two, all comments from the Anoka County Highway Department be addressed. Number three, a park dedication fee of $22,770 or $2,070 per lot for 11 lots be paid prior to releasing the plat for recording. Item four, at least one street tree is required to be planted on each lot at the time of issuing a building permit. And five, a developer agreement must be done between the applicant and the city as we'll need to provide and, to be provided and executed before releasing the plat for recording.
Second.
We have a motion by Geisler and we have a second by Ray Rower. Is there discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler? Oh, yes, come on up. Just introduce yourself and.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Martin Harstead. I'm the developer on this project. I have with me my two sons. I, um, I'd like to get clarification on one item from the city attorney regarding the park dedication fees. We're removing a home on the site and a lot of other projects I've been involved in, you get credit for one park dedication fee because there's already an existing home? And because there's 11 lots, does that mean that we'd be paying for 10 lots or do we pay for 11? Or is that something that needs to be reviewed? But I know because it's part of your, your motion.
Yep.
It needs to be addressed now, I believe.
You know, Mr. Brown?
Yes, we, we did, we did look into that a bit. Uh, the, the city's park dedication ordinance went into effect in the 1970s, so development that did not pay, that, that occurred prior to that did not pay that fee. The, the house that was there was constructed well before that, so it, it never, park dedication had never been collected on. So we, we would collect it on all 11 lots.
Otherwise, we typically do give some credit if it had been previously paid.
Understand, I, I recognize it's a very old home and so I, I just thought I'd check on it.
It was a really good question.
And other than that, I mean, I, I, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But thank you, we're looking forward to it.
Did you, did you tell us when you were going to start the development?
So I have my, my two sons here, Reed and Cole, and they're, they're the builders. They dragged dad out of retirement to run this development through. The goal would be, we're, we're actually going to import soil to the project and turn it from split entry homes into full basement homes, okay? To, uh, we think there's a demand for a little higher priced home over in that area with its great access to the, to the freeways and whatnot. And the market's a little questionable these days as to whether or not we want to jump in there and put a bunch of money into infrastructure yet this fall, or whether we wait until spring. Election, we don't want to get into politics, but we don't know where this is going anywhere. So I'm a little nervous being the one that, that's funding it. So for sure, we go in and grade it after we have watershed approvals and things of that nature yet this fall, but we might hold off on putting in the actual street and the sewer and water until spring or when the market is ripe again. But I don't know. I don't want to say that it's a bad market. Don't, don't get me wrong. It's a soft market right now, but we, it's, lots have really gone up in price. And so it's, it's, it's a lot of money that goes in for infrastructure to only sit and watch it sit there.
Well, and if you wait a little bit longer, we might have our confirmation for our full access at East River Road. And that would make it even better for you there.
Yeah, absolutely. I, we, we're, I, I got the updated plans for it and I, I hope that goes through. I think that'll be a great thing. It, it, it kind of, it's kind of interesting about the chicken and the egg kind of thing here because if we have to make the connection to East River Road only for it to be torn up in the future, I mean, it's kind of, we'd like to make it kind of coordinate a little bit for sewer and water. I mean, there's, there's talk of moving the sewer over to the sewer that, there's two sewers in the street there and maybe even holding off on pushing that over until this, until the new interchange goes in. I'm sorry, we can use a temporary one.
We're giving way into the sausage now.
Mr. Mayor.
We're working with staff on it, so we'll, we'll, we'll try to coordinate it and make it the least painful on the neighbors and the neighborhood and the city in whole.
Excellent, hang on, I think Councilmember Ray Rower has a question. I did like how your sons were looking at you to see what you were going to commit them to.
Just curiosity, so you're talking about two-level homes with the full basement?
Yes.
Then, oh, okay.
I mean, we're, we'll, we'll allow ramblers for the, the empty nesters by all means, but yeah, it, it'll probably be mostly two, two-story homes plus basement. There are walkouts, there's full basements, there's whatever.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for? All right, we have a motion and we have a second. Do we have any further discussion on this? All right, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 10 is to consider introduction of an ordinance for Comcast Cable Television franchise agreement and order a public hearing. And isn't this one, when Eric usually comes running in the door? Oh, he's in the back! He did! Didn't even see him come in. Mr. Strauss, anything you want to cover on this or Mr. Brody? Just an introduction, so.
Mayor and council, you're exactly right. It's just an introduction today. As you can see, that kind of hits the high points of this Comcast cable franchise renewal. At the next one, we're going to ask that you order a public hearing and at the adoption, we'll have Mike Bradley, who is our attorney on this matter, and I'm sure he'll kind of give a short presentation about it. This is, I think, at least five years in the making. And so they finally were able to get Comcast to come around and I think they find it a, or the city finds it a favorable agreement. And so we're just asking that you introduce it tonight, order that public hearing, and we'll make sure that that's actually on the agenda for August 5th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. And then, like I said, there'll be a little bit of a, a more extensive presentation just to kind of go through each of the key points of the, of the ordinance and the agreement.
I would concur. It's been a long time coming. We're excited to be at the point we're at right now. We did keep it as an informal process because there's formal and informal, and obviously the informal is much better than it gets into more of a legal situation. So I'm happy with, you know, the agreement. It is a 10-year franchise term, so we're looking forward, you know, to hopefully passage eventually and, um, effective with Comcast. And I'll, I'll remind, this is a non-exclusive agreement. As always with the city of Coon Rapids, we are open to other cable operators as well if they're interested, so.
Very good. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Strauss or Mr. Brody on this?
No.
Hearing none, then we will consider an ordinance for Comcast Cable Television Franchise Agreement introduced and we'll order a public hearing for, I assume, August 5th, 2020. Well, that, we'll do a motion for that then, right? So we're going to consider this introduced. Okay, I'll leave the gavel alone and then we'll need a motion for ordering the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson?
Make a motion to order a public hearing to be held in August 5th, 2024 at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Ray Rower. Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that public hearing has been ordered.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we are up to the open mic public comment portion of the meeting. Is anybody here to address counsel for open mic? All right. Okay, well, speak now or for, you know, what they say, but. All right, and I don't have any reports on previous open mics, so we are up to other business. Chief Steiner, have we reached the deadline for 19 night parties?
We have, and the requests are still coming in and we'll do our best to honor them as long as they do. Last I heard, we were at 103 or 104 parties registered. So up again from last year, which is always a nice sign. There's a lot logistically that goes into getting everybody to all these, so we'll do our very best. And if people want to reach out, they can still reach out, just call the police department and we'll do our best.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you. Yeah, those are, those are kind of like pre-pandemic numbers.
They are. Good to see.
Over 100, yeah, nice. All right, any other business?
So I can always do the fun things coming up.
Sure.
So we always have farmer's market every Wednesday, so you can go to the ICE Arena tomorrow, 3 to 6, for farmer's market, great fresh produce. And our summer concert series, so that's Thursday night at the dam from 5:30 to 7:00. And this is going to be pirates, guitars, and beachfront bars. So that should be, should be fun.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking Jimmy Buffett music.
I'm thinking that sounds about right. We also have on Saturday, the 27th, the Coon Rapids Sustainability Commission is doing a self-guided garden tour, and so you can learn more about that on the website. And then before the next council meeting on Saturday, August 3rd, a very popular event at the recycling center is the shredding event where the big truck comes and you can bring a couple boxes of things to get shredded. So those are the, the big things coming up that I've got on the calendar for the next week to two weeks.
Very good. I'm looking, I'm looking out at our communications director going, wow, we've got the expert here. Did you bring a list? Councilmember Novak?
I'd just like to welcome Troop 513. You guys have sat out there this entire time and I am very impressed. Done a great job.
I didn't even realize you were here. You were lost in that whole mass of people. And then they left and I went, oh, there's scouts here. Welcome, thank you, and thank you for hanging in there with us. A quick reminder, we've mentioned it a couple times, our next meeting will be the first Monday of August, Monday, August 5th, due to the ever-popular Night to Unite on Tuesday, August 6th. Mr. Stemwell, you got anything else for us?
Mayor, you covered the one thing that I was seeing you on, so I appreciate that. I have no other business, thank you.
All right, any other business to come before council? Move to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Novak, second by Ray Rower to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.